Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the work session. It's a joint work session with the HRA, the Planning Commission, and the City Council. And it is April 26th at 6:00 PM. Mayor Rick Gonzalez asked me to let you know that she is sick right now and she, out of an abundance of caution and not wanting to get anyone else sick, decided she couldn't be here tonight. So, she just wanted to let you know she's with us in spirit, but she can't be here physically. So. All right. So, I believe the purpose of our discussion is to look at the new proposal from the Legion, so I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. So, tonight we have representatives from the Legion here. I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but I do want to bring the discussion for you and set out some feedback that we are looking for and the developer. The questions are in your staff report, but essentially, are these concepts that they're going to present tonight generally in keeping with the vision for redevelopment of the area? That information was also included in your packet for review, so you can kind of compare what we recently adopted to what they're proposing. And then are there areas or issues that the applicant should consider prior to submitting for actual land use applications? And then what we didn't mention in here, but I'd also like you to think about, is that we've conceptually talked with the Legion, it's mentioned in the report, about an affordable component to this project. So, the Legion will hopefully give some updates on what they're thinking now, since our latest discussions. But then if you guys could give some feedback, where you think they're going, if there are additional areas that they should consider, that would be helpful for us and for them moving forward. So, I'm going to turn it over to Al Tenkember. Also here tonight is Diane Miller with the Legion, and Nick, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Nick Meyer.
Meyer.
Thank you.
And Dennis Palowski, who is General Counsel for the Legion Post. Well, thank you very much for this opportunity to be with you. Is it okay if I take this off? Just as part of the presentation. We appreciate this, and I want to start by saying that what you're going to see tonight is really a preliminary look at the site and what we think is doable there within the guidelines that have been established in the Veterans Park area overlay. But we think it represents a positive approach, and we're excited to hear your comments and understand that this is an iterative process. We look forward to your questions, they will help us as we improve the proposal and move forward. There are a couple of things that jumped out at me when I read the overlay report. And one of them was connectivity, and with that, the continuity. And making sure that whatever happened in this site connected with the park, connected with the neighborhood, and connected with the history and heritage of the post. And I think that was an important part of it as well, that the Legion has been a strong presence in the community for a long, long time, and their commitment to the community is what really drives this. They want to continue to have a presence here. Would have been easy, and lots of posts are doing this. They're selling their property and just kind of moving away. This post wants to be here, it wants to continue to serve the community and be a force within the community. And that's what's driving this, and I hope you understand that commitment as a part of that continuity that you were looking for in the overlay district. What we've put together is a plan that kind of takes its cues from those issues of connectivity and continuity. The site is oriented with, obviously, the park on that side, the ice arenas on that side, the water park here, Portland Avenue here. And what we did was look at various ways in which we could orient the buildings on the site to provide for that connection to the park and provide for a view from the neighborhood that transitioned into the kind of taller buildings that we were proposing. We were also able to get the number of units that we wanted to create here within the two buildings that we're going to be showing you tonight. This building, the larger building that backs up to the ice arenas, will be all apartments around the building, hallway in the middle, apartments facing out, and apartments facing into a central courtyard that will be private and connected to the residents of the building. This will be over an entire parking area, and you'll see that as we go through the different levels. But this whole area will be underground parking. Two levels of underground parking on this side and one level of underground parking on this side. This part of this building on this side will serve as kind of the mixed-use portion of the project. Again, two levels of underground parking along the front, along Portland Avenue, will be a stepped appearance. As you can see, there will be two levels of parking and then two levels of apartments. The lower level, the first ground floor level, will be walkouts within about 15 feet of the sidewalk and Portland Avenue. So, you'll have that feeling of a brownstone where you're just kind of walking out onto the streetscape. A lot of landscaping along here as well, and trees to really soften the appearance from the neighborhood, and again, make that transition from single-family into the higher density, but doing that in a stepped portion so that there'll be two stories here and then the four stories here of apartments. Also, on this area will be the restaurant, as we're proposing it currently. We have been talking with the restaurant operator, and he will be hoping to design this portion of the site. So, it'd be at ground floor, there would be an entrance here that would be at ground level. And then the restaurant would have an opening onto the patio area, that would be this courtyard patio area, and would have views along here of the trees and the park. And the promenade that would run between the two buildings, that again would be highly decorated, highly landscaped, and create that corridor through the site that would connect to the water park area as well as to the restaurant. And the Legion Post offices then would be on this side. The Legion is proposing to have offices and conference areas here. And then this whole part of the building on the first floor would be a ballroom, event space, community space on the first floor of the building. Overall, the restaurant, the restaurant, ballroom, and Legion offices constitute a little bit less than 15,000 square feet of that main floor. And then you would have the townhomes, as I said, are apartments along the front, and then additional apartments on this side of the hallway that would run between the apartments and the post offices and the conference area. Before you go to that, this is really interesting.
Do you want to stop?
This is parking. Most of the parking for the residents and the activities inside will be underground. We're anticipating about 280 total underground parking spaces that would be available to residents and other activities within the building. And then another, about 100 spaces that would be on the surface along that north side that would serve the restaurants and the ballroom space, as well as some additional parking for residents. And we anticipate, because of its proximity to the park, that there will be people who will park there who will use the park. And not necessarily. We'll want to manage that carefully, but certainly that's going to happen. So, we wanted to make sure that there is an accommodating feel to the site and a welcoming feel to the site. But this, as you can see, covers the entire site with underground parking. And then the next slide. The next slide then shows the second level of parking on this way, close to Portland Avenue. And then the apartments start here on this floor of this, in this building that backs to the ice arenas. These are amenity spaces that would be on that first floor. These are areas where we would have exercise rooms, yoga rooms, package rooms, all of those kind of amenities that would be a part of the apartment complex, rooms for the staff, for leasing offices, all of those kind of things. That would be a part of the kind of environment that we want to create for people who are living here. The next slide. This then shows you, again, the restaurant. This would be ground floor on this end. The site slopes pretty significantly from Portland down, and that's why we've got these different levels. This will be an at-grade access in this area into the restaurant and into the ballroom space. This patio will be actually one flight above the first floor of this building, and so it'd be somewhat elevated. This will be a projection area that goes out into the promenade, that again gives people a, this will be a railing, gives people a view of the park and the landscaped area in between the two. And then this will be the patio space for the restaurant, for the ballroom. You can anticipate events that are here in the ballroom that will have large sliding doors that will open out onto the patio, so you can use that whole courtyard area as a part of events that are taking place here. This purple is actually part of the ballroom, that would be stair areas where we could store tables and all of that kind of equipment that would be part of it. And then, as I mentioned, the post offices and conference rooms would be in this part. And then apartments, again, along this side, and then those larger units that would face out onto Portland Avenue. And all of these will have their own entrances, along with an entrance into the hallway that would be there. And then the next floor. And then this continues, this is the second floor of these units that would be on the front of the building along Portland Avenue, and then continuing with a variety of apartment styles that would be available, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, some larger three-bedroom units, and the three-bedroom units along the front. And then when you get to the third floor, these disappear, then these will have balconies that project over the roof of the lower two units, that will be that step-back area, and then we'll continue with apartments as we go up. The total number of units in the building, there will be four levels of apartments on this side, and five levels on this side. The total is 182 units is what we're projecting now, and a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. The largest part of that mix will be one-bedroom and two-bedroom, but there are also, I think, 21 three-bedroom units that would be part of it as well. Currently, we're also projecting that 37 of the units, and a mix of units, 37 of the units would be available to persons, would be affordable, available to persons at 50% of the area median income. And of course, there will also be ADA units within the building as well, and it will be fully accessible. There are elevators at several points around the building that would go from the garage areas up into the units. And then all of the units will have key entrances into the building, all of the key fobs and all of those kind of things that make it secure. Could we go to the other? Yeah, here. This is Portland Avenue, and this gives you a view of kind of how it would look in the front, that two-story, how those two-story units would be. You'd see the entrances along Portland, the landscaping, the brick and various materials that would be a part of that, and give it very much a brownstone kind of feel, a walk-up feel to that. And we think would present an attractive front to the people across the street. They're not going to be immediately struck by a four-story building right across the street, and then there will be that stepped appearance. This again shows that two-story, that the slope of the, if you follow the dash line, you can see kind of the slope of the site itself, the step here up into the four stories of apartments on this side, the two stories of garage space, the promenade that would be through here. And that gives you some of the ideas of the materials and how it would look, the courtyard areas, how they would look, some of the patio areas for restaurants, for the restaurant. Does he know?
What? Also, you think?
Just one that had lots of trees on it.
I don't think we'd end that one.
No. Okay. Well, this is just.
I think it probably works better if you have like, at the table, on the light there.
Here we go. Get it out of the light. Again, shows the parking area, shows the park, the memorial, how the memorial connects through the building with the promenade and across the parking lot. This will be either brick or cobblestone or some other paving material that would clearly designate the path through the parking lot. And then connect to with the patio area and the observation area there. We're proposing that because of making sure that we provide good fire access, that their driveway would go all the way through, so you'd have total fire access along this side of the building, and then also down here as well, again, to provide fire safety access throughout the building. A wetland holding area on this end to provide for some of the drainage. We're also looking at some underground storage of runoff. But as you can see, those of you who know the site, there will be quite a lot more green space on the site after development than there is today. But that's kind of what, that is what we're looking at, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Chair Rudolph?
Yes, thank you. I am curious, as a veteran, if there will, within the affordable component, be veterans' preferences to those that have served as well as those that are disabled veterans in that component. I would love, as a veteran, as a disabled veteran as well, there's way too many veterans in this country that can't afford housing, and I would really love to see that being its, you know, its veterans' party, it's the American Legion, see that be part of that component that's affordable.
Absolutely. And you raise a really, really good point that has been a part of the discussions within the post from the beginning, is that there be a veterans' preference at the facility. The goal is to provide housing, and we've been in discussions with the Minnesota Departments of Veterans Affairs and talked with their housing specialists about the urgent need for veterans' housing, especially in Hennepin County and here in the Twin Cities area. And that is an important part of the overall goal of the post in providing this kind of facility for veterans and active-duty service members and their families. And the other thing that's been kind of a neat, and we haven't worked this out entirely yet, but the other thing that's been a neat concept that the post has been talking about is, you know, we're five minutes from the VA hospital, and there are so many times when family members are going through treatment or surgery at the hospital, and families come in from other parts of the state and they can't afford, you know, to spend all their time in a hotel. And that we may be able to provide in concert with the VA hospital some short-term stay opportunities for families who are coming in.
That would be absolutely incredible.
So, yes, there's a strong, strong commitment to that. Dennis?
Helen, can I, I would just add, not only we talked to the state, we've talked to the county commissioner for the area, Deb Gettle.
Good tell.
And she is indicating that with that plan, the county would jump in and be supportive too, so that the units we're looking at doing would be subsidized in part by the county. And then we are, under the impression, our US Senate representatives are also in favor of this. So, we, the idea started with that, what can we do? My legal research has shown we can give those preferences, and so, and Diane's been talking with a group out in San Diego that has done something like this and done it for a couple decades now. So, that's the direction we're heading in.
Good question.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you. I really like a lot of parts of this. I'm excited that the Legion and a restaurant are integrated in. I think that works really well. I, even something as simple as, I appreciate that you worked the slope into the design and didn't just put a giant retaining wall somewhere. And I also really appreciate, I echo the comments about housing for veterans, appreciate the affordability component, that it's at 50% and not just 60%. And I also appreciate that there's larger units, that that's really a need we've seen in the community. And did you say that the affordable units would be split across the different unit sizes?
Yes, yeah, yeah. What we try really hard to do, and I should say something about my background, I spent most of my life in government. I was the mayor of Blaine for a long time, worked for Inoka County, was commissioner of the Department of Transportation here for, under the Ventura years. And, but for the last five years, I've been working with a group out of St. Louis, JPL Development, building apartment buildings and rental housing here in Minnesota. And so, we've done a number of projects and have spent a lot of time looking at trends in rental housing and in a rental lifestyle. And you're right, having a variety of units available is a really important piece of this. But the other thing we try to do is not designate particular units as affordable. We work with clients who come in, and so it could be any unit in the building, depending on what they need. And so, we're trying to avoid stereotyping certain units as, oh, okay, that's an affordable unit. They're all the same, and they're all maintained the same, they all look the same, they're all have the same amenities in them, and no one except the client and our leasing agent knows who's in what units.
My last comment though, and the one thing I'm sort of concerned about and hoping you can speak to, this feels like a lot of parking, and especially, like, I know that underground parking is really expensive. It's obviously your job to figure out how to make the financing work, but if I was counting right, there's like over 350 stalls between, and I guess, my question is for staff, I know less of the, how the numbers work out for like restaurant and event space, but if it were just the units, that's almost two per unit, that feels very high.
Sure. So, we haven't gotten to that level of detail where we're calculating spaces, it's pretty conceptual now. I'll tell you that we will calculate most of the surface parking to be for that restaurant and event space, and probably some spillover to park use and guest, but then the underground mostly for the apartments. Well, also, in this case where there are a lot of larger units, we will look at bedroom counts also, in addition to just a per unit. That tends to make sense on this type of building, so, and I'm guessing that this number will probably come down once we start looking at design. It was pointed out by someone, the handicap accessible stalls, there are none shown right now in the underground ramp. So, I mean, the count is going to come down as this plan is refined. So, I mean, it's good to note that you're concerned about providing more parking than is needed. We'll be watching for that too.
Okay. And I guess I was just wondering, obviously, you don't want, I think it's the second level of parking on what's currently the left side. You don't want apartments underground, but I don't know if you could fit some that were facing the promenade area where it's, I guess I never want to see space designated for parking that could be more homes for people.
I appreciate your comments, yeah. That will change as we move forward.
Okay.
As Moises said. And I want you to know that I spent a lot of time working with transit and really support what's happening on Portland Avenue and 66th, and in our promotional literature, we talk about the enhanced transit opportunities that this site represents. And so, we want to take full advantage of that and the connection. I mean, it's one of the great things about this site, and we all know that. This site is absolutely, absolutely unique in the Twin Cities, there's nothing else like it. And so, the access you have along Portland Avenue into downtown and the connection that this could make, both east and west, and north and south, is really pretty remarkable. And we want to take advantage of those strengths and connections.
Are you familiar?
Thank you. Just a few comments I wanted to make. Overall, I think you're on the right track, this seems really nice, and I'm glad to see this progress on it. A few specifics I have concerns about. It seems a shame that the Legion is so kind of inward-facing. This is a really beautiful location on the park, the Veterans Memorial is there, and you can't see any of that from the courtyard. So, I think that it's kind of a missed opportunity, I think that it doesn't face out to the park or out to the community more. And I am wondering, obviously, I'm excited about the project, I'm excited that this post is going to remain in Richfield, but in the lifespan of this building, it is possible this post would close or relocate to another location. And I guess I'm wondering what happens to that courtyard space, and would another restaurant in that space be as welcome, particularly the kind of echo chamber potentially of the apartments wrapping around it on all sides? So, both for the reason of taking advantage of the park and potential noise issues, I would encourage you to kind of look, to push that out, the restaurant and event space.
I want to understand. Push that out.
By which I mean like, for example, be on the, like, the patio on the north side of the building facing the memorial.
Over here.
I realize there's aesthetic reasons to not look at the parking, but something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm also just a little, I like the look of the frontage on Portland a lot, but I'm concerned that we would only have those front doors to those specific units. I would like to see a main entrance to the building that everyone can use along Portland Avenue, so people aren't walking around the north and around the parking lot.
Actually, there is. You'll see when, that one slide, yeah, go back, keep going. The front on Portland. You'll see that there are doorways that go into the hallway of the, between units. So, there are entrances that will take you into the hallway and into, for example, the ballroom space or other units as well.
Okay.
Those will be controlled, so not just anyone can walk in there.
Yeah.
But that will provide you access into those interior spaces.
But just an example of a subtle change, if you were to go forward with something like this, would be if that combined lobby just moved to the northwest corner instead of being set in on the parking lot, which would allow all customers and residents to get in directly from Portland instead of having to walk around it.
Oh, I see. Yeah, okay.
So, just something to have that functional interest. I'm glad to hear that they'll be at least for the residents who have key cards or whatever. Couple other comments. I like Councilmember Whalen. I'm disappointed to see the parking kind of maxed out. I would hope, in particular, maybe you'd have less of the surface parking for now and build that if it's necessary. We provide a lot of parking at Veterans Park, so I hope our residents aren't using it without your permission. And then one last comment, and this is a detail that I'm sure staff would address as well. But this is an unusual, unusually bad section of the Portland sidewalk where it's really narrow and right at the back of the curb. Most of Veterans Park has a setback trail, and I would love us to try to match that all the way through and hopefully not cut any of the builtable space. So, not sure exactly how to accomplish that, but I would really like to see the full trail width of the rest of the park go past this building.
We have, we actually adjusted the proximity of the front of the units to Portland based on the setback requirements in the overlay district. And so, we tried to match what was in the overlay in terms of the distances, the setbacks, where the sidewalk would be. And still allow enough so that there's a step and a little bit of a patio area.
Yeah.
You know, we want to make that front of that building a usable space as well for the residents that are there. So, bring that life out into the.
Absolutely. I just want to be clear, it's like what we have out there today in our right of way is just not adequate and doesn't meet the rest of Portland's standards. So, I just hope we can use this chance to fix that.
Good.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? For anybody that hasn't answered a question first before we go to second questions? All right, Commissioner Kenealy?
Thank you. I looked at everything you said. Thank you very much. And this design was the one that I was most excited about. I'm curious with the other two that we saw, there were impacts on the neighboring homes and the funeral home. I'm curious, are those impacted with what we're looking at today?
I just want to clarify, Commissioner Kenealy, because you weren't here. So, those were illustrations that were part of our planning study that we did. So, those were ones that our consultant put together.
Okay.
I get that it's confusing because their proposal actually looks so similar to the design that was put together by the, it confused us too when we initially saw it.
Okay.
Does that answer that?
Okay.
Other questions? Go ahead. Commissioner Serman?
Thank you. Could you explain a little bit about where there would be like public pedestrian circulation around the site, particularly from Portland, like over to the ice arena, either on the north or south sides of this property, intrude property? What's, where are the public pedestrian spaces versus the private pedestrian spaces?
Maybe, yeah. Sidewalks all the way through here. And there would be a walkway along the back side of the property, along this side of the street, down to here and connect with the trails that are along here. And the sidewalk along the front. So, really graphic all the way around the building will be walkways. And then the main walkway that comes through the middle, this will be open to the public. It comes through the middle here and goes to the memorial. And it does provide somewhat, these are stairs that come up here, so you'll be able to access, you know, the patio area of the restaurant. And as I said, there'd be glass around here, looking out onto the patio, looking out to the trees and to the park. So, you have that view of the park from the restaurant and the memorial. And then this, as I said, would be an area that would be extended out so that you would have an railing around here, so you could stand out here and see into the park and the heavily landscaped area through the promenade. So, really trying to provide that connection again, that connectivity that you talked about through the site and around the site and to the other amenities that you have developed. You know, the water park, certainly, we're not, we're not planning to do a pool in the site because you've got a great pool right here. We're going to try and tuck the city into doing some pickleball courts up here. That'd be an idea. But, yeah, we're, we want to integrate into that. We want to be a part of the park. We want to be a part of the other amenities that are there. It's part of the reason why in our design, looking at this street, that we've also, this is the entrance into the lower level of the parking area and then the entrance to the upper level here. But we want to see this continue through. We think it's really important that the folks at the arena, arenas, know that there's a restaurant here and have easy access to it and an enjoyable access, so they could walk, drop off the kids, walk over to the restaurant. And we want, again, we want to bring that together, connect that together.
Councilmember Trowman?
Thank you. I don't think I have too much to add other than what my colleagues have already said. But I do just want to note my appreciation for the care you've taken with the exterior and being sensitive. Yeah, making that tiered approach, I think, is a helpful consideration for the neighbors there to know that this is, I mean, I think this is going to be an incredible upgrade for this space. But for considering both portable housing. And then, did we, we talked about the accessibility of the numbers of ADA? I have an estimation of.
Yeah, right now, right now, the way it's configured, and as I said, this will be refined over time, but right now, there are four ADA units. There are two two-bedrooms, one one-bedroom, and one three-bedroom ADA units.
Chair Rudolph? Is that your second question?
Yeah. I want to make sure that when we think about parking, I'm not looking at just numbers because I, you know, I'm a parent of, my kids play hockey. I've been at the arena many times where, you know, there's a lot of spillover, not only to the pool lots, but also the Legion lots. And I, you know, there's, you know, I'm talking frequently every time I've been there for either a high school game or juniors' bandos game and things like that. That lot is frequently filled. And I want to make sure that we don't, you know, we look at the numbers. And I've also been at the Legion, we, there's been events there, you know, that that lot is completely filled. I don't think there's much room or a whole lot of spillover between the two. And I think it's, you know, that was a very popular place in Ridgefield before it is shut down. And, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, there is, there's not a whole lot of spillover into the neighborhoods within any reasonable walking distances between the two. I just want something to think about when we look at our parking numbers of those other areas that maybe we don't notice because, you know, we're not up there a whole lot. And when we drive by, it's in the middle of the day, and it might be empty. Just my two cents.
Chrisa?
I echo every colleague's comments about our excitement for this proposal. I would also echo that I hope that it is not overparked. And I'm curious if there will be any sort of shade study with the eye on the pool there. I know that we had talked about, and what we're talking about the overlay districts, kind of concerned that the height of the building will cause any shade to the pool. How will that be addressed as we review the proposal?
Sure. Thanks for that question. There is a requirement in the ordinance that they conduct a shade study and that it be at the summer solstice, so that we can review how it would impact the pool.
Diane?
I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. And you have some really good comments that we'll take back and work with post leadership. I just want to say, we did a science project last summer from June to August and where the sun follows on the south side. And in order to get shade on the pool, the sun has to follow on the north side. So, there isn't any shade. The shade is coming towards the Legion, not away to the pool. I showed some board members that three times. So, it's a little different than what the consultant said, so. But we have a science project.
I don't think you'll get any shadow from, even with the height of this building at this point, that you'll get any shadow. But it does require a shade study, and we certainly will.
Good for the proposal, for the plans here.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, I was asked by a resident to talk about the accessible parking. Because the way that it works is the accessible parking is percentage of how many parking spaces you have. And her concern was that if parking was limited, that would reduce the number of accessible parking spots. And so, she was advocating to have more than the required percentage, especially if you have a lot of people that are going to be using it for events and things. So, she wanted to advocate that within the parking, there'd be a little bit higher percentage of accessible parking. And so, I told her I would bring that message forward, too.
Nick, do you know right offhand what the percentage is? I mean, how many accessible spaces are required?
No, you're going to put me on the spot here. No. I don't know here, but yeah, I think that it's definitely a concern that we'll, you know, make sure we do our due diligence on, you know, we realize that not only are there residents, you know, where we'll have ADA stalls inside the building, but yes, we're anticipating sort of those flex uses for the restaurant, you know, for the event space, you know, access to the park and the memorial, you know, and all those sort of activities that there may be needs and, you know, multiple people, you know, using those spaces at the same time. So, we'll definitely try to make sure we accommodate for that.
I did mention that all of the units, except those along Portland on the first floor, will have balconies. We think it will be a beautiful view of the park and the lake. Especially in that center area. That would be a real benefit, yeah.
Councilmember Sappel, I just did want to follow up on that email. And while that chart is helpful, the interpretation of that chart was not quite right. So, when we're calculating handicap spaces, it's based on different lots. So, there's a calculation for a surface lot, then you separately calculate what would you need in a parking lot. So, there is more required than what was stated in that email. But we'll also obviously work with them, and it's in their best interest to make sure that they're providing enough accessible spaces for their residents. So, I did just want to say that those numbers weren't quite correct. Anne, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, the other thing that we're looking at, too, obviously, is charging stations and electric vehicle spaces. That will be a part of the. Right now, we are only, in our other projects, only putting them outside because there have been some car fires, you know, where things have been overcharged and just all of a sudden burst into flame. And we don't want that to happen inside of the building. So, at this point, we're proposing outdoor car charging stations.
Most of my other questions have all been covered, but I do want to reiterate it's really good to see some three-bedroom apartments for families. Are there other people? Councilmember Whalen?
I just wanted to, I know at various points, this process has been a little more tense between the city and the Legion. I just wanted to hear, I'm guessing that this is something the Legion is excited about. If you could just speak more to kind of where Legion members are at and what? I don't know. Just want to make sure we hear more from you and not just from the developer.
Diane, can I address that?
Yeah, we just had a meeting on this.
One of the things we ran into right off the bat within the Legion itself and the membership was that that current facility was built by, and kind of the baby, if you would, or child of the post. And so, I think some of the current members go back generations. Their parents, maybe even grandparents are there. So, we had to talk to them about the idea of having that space become more perpetual, rather than throw money into it. And so, maybe because it upset some people to think there is going to be a replacement of the building. And others, before we were able to formulate our plans, were concerned we were just going to sell the property and, you know, mega corporation come in and build it up. But I, especially over the last year, we've just seen, and Andy's a member, could address this, but we have seen more harmony and support for this within the membership. In part, and I really appreciate the participants here picking up on the veteran part. I think that did it for us when we came across the idea that if we're going to put housing up and there's a shortage of affordable housing for veterans, why not this space? And it was just a sea change towards reception to almost all members. Ellen hasn't mentioned this, but developer he works with, Mike Lang out of St. Louis, was a prisoner in war in Vietnam. And so, he, at one point, was looking as a, to buy and develop it. When he found out what we were planning to do and put the veteran component together, he jumped on board so fast. And really, you know, we're trying to be cost-conscious of what we can do with the property, whoever mentioned it, height concerns, take-out units. But Mike has us a great number of projects either underway or completed here in the state. And he's going to help us in this era of inflation, keep a cap on our costs and whatnot. But, so, my point is, from all these different vantage points, we think the concept, as it's come along, has really brought everyone together. And maybe that wasn't true at the beginning, and I think that was more because there was so much uncertainty, what are we going to do with this property? How does it, the future of the post sit in this? And as Ellen pointed out, a number of posts are turning in their charter. We don't want to do that. We're actually hopeful that if this succeeds, it becomes an example across the country for what can be done, partnership with the communities, the state. And so, you know, that's how we see this is, hopefully, we become a template for what to do. I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to introduce Andy Keller, vice commander and commander in training.
You can tell they're going to be the future of what we're doing.
Do you want to just comment what the goal? It's not a bottle of beer anymore. Tell them what the goal.
So, I'm not good at public speaking. I grew up going in there with my parents and my grandparents. As a generational change, is the heavy drinking just going to be part of our future if we both want to be a constructive part of our community again? When we reopen up our restaurant, obviously, we're not going to run it because we haven't had good luck with it. The future we want to operate more is a veteran-oriented community center, offering different services and also doing mentorship and bringing different accounting and stuff like that. Hope that's our future.
And we thought by letting, bringing in and out. And we thought by letting, bringing in an outside restaurant operator, that takes care of so many problems we've had in the past. Who do you hire for to manage and run the place? And instead, we looked at it like, let's bring someone in that is successful at this. And so, there will be a revenue positive aspect without us having to worry day and night about cost of food or service or those things. That guy's a veteran. So, the, the person that we, really, we've identified with. But it, so what we've been trying to do is go, what does the Post do best? And we looked over the sixty, seventy years that the current property was up. It put four million back into the Richfield sports and youth and all those things. We haven't been able to do that for the last five years or so, right? Been really cut off from that. So, that's kind of what we wanted to do, is go, let's get to the point where professionals do the, the business end of things. And we, by possessing the property and being a nonprofit, a charitable organization, that money is gonna stay in Richfield rather than head, head out to some investor in a hedge fund somewhere. So, and I think the members are really proud of that, as Andy just pointed out. And we kind of see Andy and his generation, they're gonna be the ones looking after this property after we're done. We didn't wanna give them a sixty-year-old restaurant.
It's, it's important, following up on what Dennis is saying, that you all understand, when this is all done, it's gonna be owned by the Post. It's not gonna be owned by somebody else. It's not gonna, their investment in the community is what you're seeing here and, and commitment to the community. Our job as developers is to help get the project put together and, and make it successful. And, but the Post is gonna, is gonna own it.
And we thought, we were happy because we saw private development weren't going to make it on the numbers. We think we can make it on. They just would've had too much opportunity loss. So, thankfully, we found Elwyn and made, made it known to work with those overlay rules. We do not want to invest resources, getting you guys to change after all the work you did. We're grateful you guys did it because it gave us a, a map, a plat, if you will. And we're, we're really hopeful that whatever needs you guys collectively ask of us, we can meet for this plan.
Well, I wanna thank you for coming and bringing this proposal forward. And thank you to the Legion for working with our community over the years. You've done so much for our community, and it's, it's wonderful to see this plan. So, we're gonna have to wrap up here shortly because we have a council meeting coming up. But I wanted to give cha, ask staff if there's anything else we need to comment on and to say thank you to all of you for bringing this forward.
I was just wondering if anyone wanted to comment on the connectivity to the park. That is something that Recreation Services was very concerned about in the overlay district. I was wondering if policymakers had strong feelings about that. The overlay district really called for more of a fire access and limiting it to pet access. So, something that would not look like a road where people would drive from the hockey arena over here. If you wanna come from the hockey arena to have dinner, you should walk over there. They were very concerned about cut-through traffic. So, I'm just wondering if, where folks are landing on that.
Commissioner Canely?
But just briefly, it seems like it's more their risk than ours, that it would seem like our traffic would get in their way rather than the other side. My preference ideally would be that that south thing would be a public alley or a public street, and we'd have that connection. But to me, if that were an intentional connection, that would actually be good for the hockey arena to be able to have a reliever exit to Portland. But I do not have a concern about it. And I do like, by the way, the north-south pet connection and extending the viewshed of the memorial.
We, we think that is one of the hidden, not so hidden gems of the property, is suddenly, you live there, you've got park. You've, you've got a pool. You've got an ice arena. We think that, we think we're gonna be turn-away applicants. But we see that park as hallowed ground. How lucky for us, right where the memorial is and what, what we can do with it. So, we were kind of asking Elwyn, make sure where you guys see the parking space but that adjoining thing, we want that prominent. We want it lit, and we want people to feel like they can go back and forth and don't have to look too hard left or right for cars zipping by at twenty miles an hour.
Just from a pedestrian's point of view, thank you. I spent a lot of time on foot around there. I'm sure a lot of us do, and it, it looks awesome. Really, it looks awesome.
Councilmember Trautman?
And I, and I just add that I, I maybe, I, I recognize staff's concerns. But to the extent that we actually highlight that, I think it will take what looks like a side and sometimes neglected side of the arena. And we'll just elevate that whole area when you're walking or when you're driving. And so, I actually appreciate that right now there'll be some green space there, and right now that's a catch-all for garbage from the parking lot. It'll be a great improvement.
I'll have to put our garbage bins somewhere else.
So, the last question was for Chair.
Actually, it's just sort of a comment. As a veteran of the Army, I'm really proud and excited for what you are taking the Legion from and to. It has been a gathering spot with other veterans for mine, of mine, for the last twenty years since I've lived in Richfield. It, it will be an exciting place to be able to share that time with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're very, we're very, thank you so much.
Thank you. Stand your journey.